Thank, all right. Thank you, everybody. It is May 23, 2022 at 7:00 PM, and I have the honor of calling this night's school committee meeting to order as
Recording in progress.
As the senior member of the committee, which seems unreal to be after just serving five years, but as a senior member, a tradition is that the the senior member is the chair of the meeting until a new chair is elected, which we will get to in just a minute. But I wanted to call the meeting to order. I also wanted to thank folks for pivoting a little bit and having this meeting back on Zoom. I know we've been endeavoring to meet in person of late. And I've had a, for a number of reasons, but one, because my son had some surgery today. We are doing it remotely. So thank you for accommodating that. Really quickly, before we get to the election, there's a couple of things. First, I'm going to read the comment. This meeting is being held remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised, this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be reported by the town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair, that's me at the moment, at the start of the meeting in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that I may inform other participants of said recording. There are 39 participants on the call, 26 the school committee members, members of the administration, and then 26 attendees. If anyone is recording, raise your hand. All right, I don't see anyone.
Harbor Media is recording tonight.
Oh, they are. Thank you. All right. Okay, thank you. All right, so before we jump into the business, I did want to say a few comments. So I hope you'll bear with me. And I, this is going to be a little bit of an unusual meeting, and I apologize in advance, but because of my son's surgery today, I am going to have to depart the call in just a few minutes. But I did want to, this is such an honor to be the senior member of this esteemed group of folks. So I just wanted to take the opportunity, because tonight is a big night. So before we started, I wanted to take a moment to do a few thank yous. First, I wanted to thank the four folks who ran for the three school committee seats that were filled on May 16. While contested races are very stressful, particularly for the candidates and their families and their teams of people, and those types of elections can sometimes result in fractured communities. But I think we grow so much more as a community and as a committee when we do have choices. A race ensures that more people come out to vote and more people engage, which makes our community stronger. And a race ensures that important issues and new perspectives are raised, which makes our committee stronger. So I want to take this opportunity to sincerely thank the four candidates, particularly Matt LaBretton, who had tremendous energy and engagement among his supporters. Matt is not off the hook. We have talked a little bit or texted, and we've told him we'll be looking to him to continue improving the district in one of the many new roles that he now has open to him. To Ally and Matt, thank you for joining us and bringing those new perspectives to the committee that will help us continue to meet our responsibilities to ensure every student achieves educational success. To Ness, thank you for being with us and staying with us. Your experience and financial acumen has been such a great benefit to the committee and to the district, and it would have been greatly missed. So we are very grateful to have you back. Prior to our meeting tonight, Ally, Matt, and Ness were sworn in as elected members of the school committee. So let's take a quick moment to congratulate them on, very happy.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks, Michelle.
Yes, no, thank you. Glad you're here. And then finally, one last thank you. I would like to recognize and thank Carrie Me for serving as our chair for the past two years. I said this once before, but it bears repeating. I think all former chairs can point to the challenges and difficulties they faced over their term, whether it was budgets, leadership changes, building failures, funding for new buildings. But all of us have gotten together and voted, you win. You win the most challenging chairmanship ever. Leading us through a pandemic coupled with the numerous leadership changes and budget challenges was unbelievably challenging, and yet you never wavered in your commitment to our schools and to our students. You were spokesperson, timekeeper, open meeting law compliance maintainer, and we recognize that at more than a few meetings, that was a very unenviable position to be in. So we thank you for being the person who is willing to shoulder that burden. And a very special thank you to Glenn, Liam, and Ryan for giving so much of their time with you, so that you could give your time to hang up. Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for entrusting me. And I'm very happy to hand it over.
All right, well, that is a good segue. So as Carrie and the other officers, myself and Ness move on from our respective roles, it is time for the election of officers for the 2022-23 term. For Carrie's going to put up the names of the candidates for each of the positions. And just a little bit of background that might be helpful to those watching at home or unfamiliar with the process. So one thing, as much as everyone appreciated and recognized Carrie for all the hard work she did and how much I'm sure she enjoyed every moment of it, or most of the moments. The policy for the school committee is there is a term limit for the chair, the position of chair. You can only hold the position of chair for two consecutive years, and then you have to roll it off to someone else. So the process for being nominated to hold a officer position or an executive board position of either chair, vice chair, or secretary is a self-nomination process. The nominations are due after the election is held, so that new members have an opportunity, if they want to put their name in for a role on the executive board, they have an opportunity to do that. And as you can see on this, there are three positions, and there is just one person who put their name in for each one. Quite awkwardly, the first position is going to be for chair, which is my name next to it. So the votes will be done, because we're on Zoom tonight. We'll do a quick roll call vote. I'm going to go newest member to senior member. So if you're in favor of the candidate for the office, you can vote a. If you're not in favor, you can vote nay. And if you don't feel you have enough information to vote, you are welcome to abstain. So I'm going to start with a roll call vote, and I'm going to go without.
Michelle, do you need a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry to want a motion. Yes, I guess I do need a motion.
I'll make a motion to elect Michelle Ayers chair of the school committee for the 2022-2023 school year.
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, so now we come to vote. Oh, I feel like I just channeled my puzo, and now we come to vote. So Ally.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Tim.
Enthusiastic eye.
Thank you. Jen.
Hi.
Ness.
Hi.
Carrie.
Hi.
And I will be an I as well. Thank you. It is unanimous. Thank you so much. All right, I will next take a motion for the position of vice chair.
I'll make a motion to approve Ness Corente as vice chair of the Hingham School Committee for the 2022-2023 term.
I second that motion.
Well, thank you. All right, with that, we will vote. So Ally.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Tim.
Another enthusiastic.
Jen.
Hi.
Ness.
Hi.
Carrie.
Hi.
All right, and I am an I as well. Thank you very much, Ness. Third vote is for the position of secretary. Would someone make a motion?
I'll make a motion to appoint Jen Benham as secretary to the Hingham School Committee for the 2022-2023 school year.
Second. Someone's second. Thank you very much, Carrie. All right, so for Jen Benham, for secretary, Ally.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Tim.
Another enthusiastic eye.
Jen.
Hi.
Ness.
Hi.
Carrie.
Hi.
And I am an I as well. Thank you so much, everyone. Thank you to Ness and Jen for being offering and willing to fill these positions and to all of the rest of the members for your support in these important roles. And I just wanted to say, I recognize that the work ahead, after an incredibly challenging two years, and while we have been able to return to a significantly more normal educational experience, we know we have new challenges, some that we probably don't even see coming yet. However, I do want to view those opportunities, I mean, those challenges as opportunities, because I really do think we have a lot of opportunity to improve student performance, to hear new perspectives, to build new relationships and repair other relationships, and to really learn to grow together as a community. I think in an increasingly fractured world, we really need to strengthen our ties with each other and recognize that while we may have different ideas on how we reach our goals, I think we also recognize that we really do have one goal as a committee, and that is to maintain a high quality education for all Hingham students. And the days and months ahead are going to be exciting and challenging and challenging, and I really look forward to working with all of you and serving as your chair. One quick thing, just because I do have to leave, I'm so sorry, but there was items 7.1 and 7.2 on the, no, sorry, 7.2 and 7.3 on the agenda are school committee liaison assignments and subcommittee assignments. So I will send everyone, typically how it works, the chair will send an email to everyone letting you know what subcommittees there are, what liaison positions are available. We have a new one this year. And then, so I'll send you a list of all the open, available liaisons and subcommittee assignments, and then you get back to me, let me know which ones you're most interested in, and then I have the fun job of appointing everyone to their various subcommittees. So if anybody has any questions on that, feel free to reach out, but I will send an email describing how that process works. And then at our next meeting, we'll be able to know what everyone will know their assignments at the next meeting. Okay, so I'm going to turn it over to Ness, and I'm going to have to leave. So I'm so sorry to do this, particularly at the first meeting as chair. So I'm going to leave it with Ness. I think first she's going to explain the symbolism of why so many of us are wearing purple tonight. And with that, I'll see you guys soon. Thank you.
Take care, Michelle.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, so first night as vice chair, I get to lead us through the meeting tonight. So I'm honored to be serving as vice chair. Thank you, guys, for your trust in me. I wanted to take a couple of minutes to share some thoughts on the significance of today, which is May 23. At last week's select board meeting, Liz Klein read a proclamation that the select board then unanimously voted in favor of to proclaim May 23, 2022, Maddie's Promise Day in the town of Hingham. I wanted to recognize this very special day here as well. Maddie McCoy was a beautiful young girl who attended Plymouth River Elementary. She lost her battle with a very rare form of cancer called rhabdomyosarcoma. On May 23, 2019, she was 11 years old. There are so many within the Hingham Public Schools who loved Maddie. Julie Harrington is a fifth grade teacher who formed a special bond with her. And as teachers do, Mrs. Harrington has the best words to describe her. She shared, "To know Maddie was to love her. She was truly an angel on earth, always quick with a kind smile and an encouraging word to others. She truly was the essence of who you would want to be. Before Maddie's death, she made a promise to help others, and she was living up to it, creating artwork and a plan to sell to help those in need. Her parents, using Maddie's bravery and kindness as inspiration, established the charity Maddie's Promise, which strives to make Maddie's next chapter of one of positive change for young children battling enormous odds. This week, in celebration of Maddie's Promise Day, PRS will be completing Acts of Kindness each day to honor Maddie's kind and giving spirit. I wanted to share, as I believe we can all do our part to keep Maddie's spirit alive. On her rides to and from Children's Hospital, Maddie was impacted by seeing homeless men and women. She sold her artwork to raise money for the homeless. All this week, there will be boxes in the PRS school lobby collecting non-perishable food items for the Hingham Food Pantry. Today, we also recognize Maddie by wearing her favorite color, purple. Tomorrow, the hope is for people to show kindness to the school community by picking up trash on the playground. Maddie always had a kind and encouraging word for others, so to honor Maddie on Wednesday, you can make a card and write a note to someone you love. Finally, funding research for children's cancers always needs our help. On Thursday, for a $1 donation, children at PRS can wear a hat to school. Thank you to the McCoy family and to the PRS staff for helping to keep Maddie's wonderful spirit alive. I appreciate you letting me take the time to do that. Sorry, I'm getting choked up. Okay, so I'm going to move us to item number two on the agenda, approval of minutes. Somebody want to make a motion on 2.1?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes for the school committee meeting held on May 5, 2022, which was a joint meeting with the Student Advisory Council.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Okay, I will go down for approval. Ally.
Could we abstain since we were not at that meeting? I abstain.
Matt Cosman.
Abstain.
Tim.
Hi.
Jen.
Abstain.
Carrie.
Hi.
And I am an I as well. Okay, 2.2, minutes of the school committee meeting held on May 9, 2022. Did we have, did we have a form?
No, I don't think so. So I think maybe we'll put it on the next agenda.
I'll hold it. Okay, so we'll hold that, put it on the next agenda. Minutes of the school committee meeting held on May 9, 2022. Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on May 9, 2022.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, Ally, Ally.
I abstain.
Okay, Matt.
Abstain.
Tim.
Hi.
Jen.
Hi.
Carrie.
Hi.
And I am an I as well. Okay, so we got through those ones. Okay, so item number three, questions and comments. The Hingham School Committee encourage community engagement and welcomes questions and comments as agenda items are discussed at the meeting. In addition, we have set aside up to 15 minutes at the beginning of this meeting for comments and questions that fall under the purview of the school committee and are not already on tonight's agenda. If any guests wish to speak, please raise your hand, state your name and address, and address your comments to the chairperson. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker and must relate to topics within the scope of the responsibility of school committee. As established by Massachusetts general law, the responsibilities of the school committee are to, one, select and evaluate the superintendent; two, review and approve budgets for public education in the district; and three, establish educational goals and policies for the school and the district. Speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner and to consider the privacy interests of others. The public comment period is not a time for debate or response to comments by the school committee. The school committee is not adopting or endorsing any of the comments made during the public comment period. Let's see. Two hands. I will call on Paige Suarez.
Hello, my name is Paige Suarez. I live at Three Beechroom Place, and I'm an eighth grader at Hingham Middle School. Dear school administration, principals, and school committee members, on behalf of some of Hingham Middle School students, we ask for you to change the current dress code policy. The current dress code policy has unfairly targeted female students, and we feel that it has harmed some students from feeling safe, confident, and unable to focus at school. Therefore, we are in support to change the current policy and ask for student members to participate in this important discussion. We no longer can remain quiet on this issue, because some of our peers have been told that they are in violation and drawing the wrong attention simply because of what they are wearing. This has resulted in some students feeling unnecessary fears and concerns on what they wear, how they sit and behave in school. We encourage the school administration, principals, and school committee members to foster an environment that is respectful and nonjudgmental in how students are dressed. Together, we support a gender-neutral dress code policy.
Thank you so much, Paige. I appreciate your comment. Just so you know, the district has recently updated its policy, and it's my understanding that the handbooks are going to be updated as well. I'm not sure, Gary, if you know what a timeframe is, but I think the school committee will then approve those handbooks. So I appreciate you coming here and addressing your concerns. Barbie Lynch.
Hi, Barbie Lynch, Three West Moreland Road. I just had a request. Recently, I was on the Hingham Schools website looking for the Hingham Public Schools policy manual and noticed that the last time it was updated online was on May 10 of 2021. There's a couple of things on the agenda tonight, so that's what brought my attention to it. And I just wanted to make a request to have that updated online, please, to the new policies that have taken place over the last year. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other questions or comments? Okay, all right, thank you. Next, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. I'd also like to welcome Matt and Ally to the school committee. And I look forward to working with you in my time remaining, which is limited, but I'm grateful to have worked with you in the past. And thank you so much for taking on this very responsible role in Hingham. And I'd like to also thank Carrie for her leadership and her communication with me over the last months while I've been in this position. It's been wonderful to have you as a chair and work with you during this time. And, you know, tonight, we have, it's a very important night. I think, Ness, your comments are just so heartfelt. And, you know, we're here for children, and when one of our children, you know, land up, you know, going through what she did and landed up passing, it's wonderful that this community can rally around what her beliefs were. So I just want to thank you so much for doing that. You know, we're coming to the end of the school year, and I just wanted to remind the school committee that we have our June 6 meeting, that's our next one. And then we have Juneteenth, which will then, if there is a second meeting in June, that will take it to June 27. So it's possible, it's possible that we have one meeting left if the 27th is still going to happen. But I just want you all to know that June 6 will be my last meeting, because I'm not available on the 27th. So if there's something that needs to happen between the 6th and the 27th, you know, Juneteenth, you know, we're definitely off schedule there because of the holiday. Tonight's superintendent's report is really going to be centered around a move that's happening in the school district relative to the pre-K program. And Dr. Venice is here tonight to give an overview on, you know, we had some questions on the program and why is it moving? And, you know, is it fair to different parts of the community that the program's moving? And, you know, Dr. Venice has been working on this program for quite some time, since, actually, since he's come into the community. And there's a number of challenges that we have logistically in the community. And she's going to talk a little bit tonight on why this program was moved and why it's really in the best interest of all students to actually have that move happen. So, Dr. Venice, I'll turn my time over to you to kind of give an overview of where we are with that program. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary, and thank you to the committee for giving me a little bit of time to talk about it. So just for a little bit of context, we do have across the district, pre-K through 22, specialized programming for students with more substantial disabilities. Those students generally are nonverbal or have limited verbal skills, require applied behavioral analysis as the main methodology for their instruction. Coming into the district, the way that the programs were spread out across the district was the pre-K has a program, and then our K-2 program is at East. Our 3-5 program is at South, and then we have a program at the middle school. And then we have a 9-12 program at the high school, and then a postgraduate program at the high school as well. And we really identified that we needed to put together the two elementary programs so that the students who were part and taking part of that program didn't have their elementary experience disrupted in the middle of it. These are students that we know struggle with socialization, we know struggle with transitioning, and that didn't afford them an opportunity to really be part of the elementary community, because they had to end up leaving at the end of second grade to go to the 3-5 program at South. We needed to put things in place before we could even entertain the move, such as increasing our related service time, because the students require a high level of service. And we needed to make sure that we could cover that when the program moved. We are now in that position, and we're really excited to bring these two programs together. The plan is to have them have classrooms that are joined with a small kitchen in the center so that there's opportunity for functional skill building, cooking, any specific dietary needs or anything that needs to take place for these students. And then in addition to that, our teachers will have a professional learning community that they haven't had previously, because they've been in separate buildings. So those teachers will be able to collaborate with one another, as will the paraprofessionals who work in that program. In addition, related service providers won't have to go to multiple schools that'll be able to service those elementary students in one building. And it will support the transition when the students go to the other classroom for third grade, because the teachers will already really know all of those children very well. So it's a great, it's a great change. It's a great move. I've had my eyes on it for a while, so I'm excited to actually execute it. And now that we have all the pieces in place, we're able to do that. The major disruption is to the pre-K Kids in Action program, because that is the space that we are going to be taking over at South. The great thing for them, though, is that they're taking the classroom over at East, which is in the same portion of East as the pre-K. So then those students will be joining back together in their age-appropriate, in their age-appropriate groups. So we know it's a change. We know there's been a lot of that. But this is a really necessary one in the interest of these students. That's it for me.
Great. Thank you, Suzanne. I know we've had some parents concerned about the move, because logistically, it is no longer in the neighborhood where they initially signed up for the program. So we've had a few emails regarding that, and I asked Suzanne to kind of give an overview of exactly why the program was being moved. So with that said, Ness, I'll turn it back to you. I'm sorry, I'm kind of getting through COVID, so my voice is not what it should be.
All right, Gary. Thank you for hanging with us during this meeting. Anybody have any questions? For Gary or Suzanne?
Just, Ness, yeah, just a comment, and I think it's a great idea to move the program together so that the kids who, you know, struggle the most with transition don't have to transition in the middle of elementary school. And I think it added bonus to get all the preschoolers together, too. So thank you for doing that.
Anyone else?
I guess maybe this is to Suzanne, or that's just, what's the number of kids in the pre-K that this is, that the move impacts? Like, how big is that program?
I don't actually know what the Kids in Action numbers are. It's the Kids in Action pre-K, not our regular preschool.
I think Jackie's on. I think we're talking about 20 kids.
Okay.
Jackie, if Sherri, Jackie Sansom could get, she had her hand raised, she could correct me if I'm incorrect. If Jackie's there, and Jackie, maybe raise your hand, and maybe Sherri can let you talk.
Hi.
Hey, Jackie.
So typically, we do have 20 children. Right now, we have 17. We have had a few drops, but typically, there's 20.
Thank you.
Jackie. Jackie, just Matt, I believe that's twenty. Jackie, so that's either a four-hour program or two, two-and-a-half-hour programs. Is that the way that works? Just if you maybe just give them a little background on how the program works, please.
Sure. So the pre-K program runs from eight-thirty until one o'clock. There is an option for an eleven-thirty dismissal, so we do have a couple of children who leave at eleven-thirty. We also have, I believe, two children for the upcoming school year who will be going to the integrated preschool at East in the afternoon. So this is a really good move for them because they're in the same building as well and do not have to take the bus now to go over to East in the afternoon.
Okay, thank you. It sounds like it's it's less disruption, but I think we had been hearing that it was that the communications was not what people had thought. So I I appreciate you giving an update today, Suzanne.
Always happy to.
All right, so we'll move over to the next item on the agenda, communications. So five point one, we've got student communications. Elijah?
Hello, everyone. I realize now I probably could have timed this better considering this is the beginning of the new term. Excuse me, but this is this is the last meeting that I'm going to be at as representative. So we'll we'll onward and upward, we'll figure that out next time if we may coincide. But at any event, I'm not going to give some drawn-out speech where I overstate my own importance. Some insane degree because frankly, the fact that I'm here is irrelevant. The important part is that at the beginning of the next school year, another student is going to be right where I was in the town hall meeting room doing the exact same thing. So simply, I'd just like to thank everyone I've had the pleasure of working with for this past year for the chance I was given. I simply got an email about the Student Advisory Committee and I thought this sounds like something valuable. And so I put my name forward and suddenly I was in charge of it. And I was given an incredibly valuable experience that I'm going to remember for a very long time. So I just hope that when you see that student next year, whoever it may be, that you'll remember how much this means to so many people and how grateful I am that I got to be that voice for a little while. So I firmly believe that you built something very good here and I really hope it'll last a long time. So just thank you for giving me the chance to do this and for letting me work with all you on so many things that really mattered. So as my last little student update, today at the end of the of the school day, the class twenty-two gathered to officially sort of commemorate the Anna Clinton Levin Memorial Bench, which is now in front of the high school building, which wherever will remain and people will walk past it every day and it will serve as a reminder of a life that touched so many. So that's all I have. And it's kind of weird to say this because I'll I'll be here for the rest of the meeting, but uh, thank you and goodbye. That's it.
Elijah, thank you so very much. You may think it's insignificant to us, but it's the student voices that we want to hear. I think it's the most important part of what we're doing here. We we want to make sure that we are doing right by you. So your voice is extremely important, probably the most important in the room. So I appreciate all of your time and effort this year. Congratulations on your senior year and very exciting that you guys are onwarded upward. I hear that tomorrow's the last day of school, so congratulations. I hope you enjoy every last minute of it. I'm glad that everything has opened back up and you guys have a normal year so that you can celebrate in style. So thank you very much for all that you have done. All right, we'll move on to five point two, communications received by the superintendent. Gary, do you have anything? No, okay. Other communications, five point three, anything received by the committee members? No, okay. All right, so we'll move on to six, unfinished business. The first one is six point one, we're going to get a budget update for fiscal twenty-two, and I believe John Ferris is going to lead us on this.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to share my screen or about five o'clock, I did throw a a presentation into the drive for if you, if anybody wanted to follow along. And then also for the public, it's on the website under the budget documents for FY twenty-three, if they wanted to follow along. But I'm just going to call this presentation up and give you a budget update for FY twenty-two. So hopefully, all this works fine. I hope at this point you are seeing a presentation, the PowerPoint slides. Let's see if I could do the slide, too. Okay. We, excuse me, that is that, how's that visual for you? Is it, is the slide actually cut off or can we see that slide good? Can someone help and tell me what you see and if it's scrolling correctly?
You're good, you're good to go, John.
Okay, good, thank you. Okay, so here's the budget update. This, it's on May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-two, but the the last time I took a budget forecast snapshot was on May sixteenth. So this is a budget snapshot as of May sixteen. And I always, whenever I do a budget forecast, I need to start with this disclaimer that forecasting is a very humbling experience, right? The the only guarantee is that things will change and the changes could be up or down. And I think, you know, from a forecast methodology, we hope that we're like directionally correct and sort of in the ballpark. So the the methodology, it's a snapshot as of May sixteenth. And what that does is it projects spending through June thirtieth. So I basically look at everything that we've expended as of May sixteen, everything plus everything that's encumbered. And then we use that, and then we use labor rates for those items that aren't encumbered and try to project run rates so that we take all of the expenses that we expect to expend up to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, to close out the world, the year. That's also, you know, apply business knowledge after doing this for many, many years of of what typically happens at the end of the year and try to incorporate all that into the forecasts. So ultimately, we would compare the projected spending to the actual budget dollars that were were authorized by town meeting and calculate variances. Positive variances are those that where the spending is less than the budgeted amount and a negative variance is where spending exceeds the budgeted amount. We look at this for, you know, approximately, there's over seven hundred line items. And we look at each of those line items and try to make our best judgment, you know, on where they're, where they'll ultimately end up by June thirtieth. And the, so that's that, that's, that's the process. So back in March and as of February, I had estimated a positive variance of about one point seven million dollars. And and that was basically, that's a point in time, the spending was not nearly complete. And the, you know, purchase orders weren't fully, fully loaded. And we estimated this positive variance of about one point seven million dollars. As of May forecast, May sixteenth, I'm projecting a positive variance of about approximately a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So that is the budget, the budget amount is, is the budget amount is greater than the amount that we have projected to spend come the end of the year by a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Various mitigating actions were taken to utilize the current year's funding and I'll get into those in the in the next slide. But favorability is still likely to increase somewhat because typically, at the end of the year, what will happen is purchase orders may close out being unexpended. At the end of the year, we look at our, any remaining monies on smaller grants and we'll want to use those against the budget items so that we expend the grant funds before the taxpayers' money. So typically, at the end of the year, we usually see an increase in this positive amount. However, even though this positive amount of one seventy, we're not completed, we're not finished spending yet. So even that one seventy is still subject to flux at this, at this time. And, you know, we've looked at a lot of items to to mitigate and to use up that initial one point seven. And and by the way, that one point seven, when it was first disclosed, it got everybody realizing, hey, I should look at my budget and see what I have to spend. So the departments did in fact go to their budget and say, oh, yeah, I got this money, I have to, I have to spend this money. And they started increasing their spending levels, levels. So that also helped to lower that variance from the one point seven. So where is this money going? What actions have been taken since we last did this? So unspent ESF funding reserved for future use. We, so basically, we had projected about a one point three, almost a one point four million dollars of ESF funding to be spent. When we took a look back in February, we had not expended. We only expended about three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So we basically pulled back nine hundred and eighty-five thousand and we're holding that for future use. And that future use can be spent for FY twenty-three, FY twenty-four. And I do believe that we've actually received the information now that it may be extended for an additional eighteen months. So this, this bunk of money could be available to the school committee for at least until eighteen, until F, the end of FY twenty-four, which would be June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four, or perhaps even longer into sometime into FY twenty-three. So what did we do with the money? We advanced some capital projects from FY twenty-three into FY twenty-two. You may recall when we had our budget approved at town meeting, we got some eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in capital funding. When you take a look at that piece, four hundred and seventy-six thousand of that is basically for recurring technology charges within the school system, which leads us only about three hundred and forty-three or three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for maintaining ten buildings throughout the school system, clearly not enough. So in order to, what we've done is we've actually advanced the, some building maintenance items and some other purchases from what would have been projected capital for FY twenty-three into FY twenty-two. So we have a planned purchase and a bid out right now for those seven D vans. You may recall, we had three that were proposed to either be purchased or to be leased. We've, we've issued a, an RFP to purchase those vans and expect the price to come in in the next week or so, where we could in fact lock in, you know, and and purchase those vans and create a purchase order. We don't know what the timeframe is going to be, so this is very timely because the, with the supply chain, we've waited sometimes like six months or even more for a vehicle to show up. So we're, you know, we'll be opening that next week and when we get the pricing, we're estimated, we used about a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars to purchase that. And then that also has benefits to the FY twenty-three budget because if you recall, on a twenty-three budget, we had a recurring lease that was embedded in there. So rather than you pay the lease operating expense in FY twenty-three, we would actually have purchased these vehicles. We purchased a maintenance truck, we had that on our capital list, that's some sixty thousand dollars. The sound barrier replacement at the high school, this is a barrier that goes around the ear handle there that was all tattered and torn to pieces. So and and how we selected these is these were sort of like shovel-ready projects. These were projects we had quotes on, we knew we can get like purchase ordered quickly. We know we can kind of like get the project in order and in motion. And that's very important when you close out a year because when you encumber funds, the funds are supposed to be for projects that are actually in process. So all of these that were shovel-ready and and ready and are in process, moving into the the in-process stage at this current time. Advance the South BMS upgrades, the, the, the energy management system or business building management system upgrades were needed and we had forty thousand projected for the next three years. So we were able to pull the trigger on that and say, yes, let's get, let's get that going. PRS shed, if around that shed area, you see a lot of heaving from the roots and the like, so that has to be repaid. You know, we had sound quotes for that, so another shovel-ready project, we can get up, going, going. Advanced lighting upgrades, we have a vendor ready on standby with a contract where we can, you know, take that type of action. Advanced textbook purchases, expand assessment programs, the English as well as math. The really only negative offset is costly energy, just much higher than ever imagined. I mean, if I, if I was, you know, back in February, this is significantly higher than what I ever thought energy would have happened by this time, you know, several months ago. And then, and to my C and H, I will take questions at the end of this. So what I, what I have here is numbers, these are in your packages. So the, you can see the individual budget items here and and I have some numbers. I'm not going to go through all the numbers because I just told you where these highlights are. Following, but but you should understand this one. So you look at, we had a total budget here of sixty-two, eight, ten. This was our capital budget for twenty-two of ten, one million, eighteen thousand. So the operating budget was sixty-one, seven, ninety-two. But now we've pulled back ESF, so you get it with justice. ESF typically our grants, we, we give a net budget, you know, we use the offsets against the budget, but ESF was sort of an overlay. So in order to get down to a real number, you have to take out ESF, throw back in what we did spend in ESF. So, you know, we have an operating budget here of about sixty million, eight hundred and six thousand dollars. So we're measuring against that, plus an appropriation for capital of one million, eighteen, or sixty-one, eight, twenty-five. And I know everybody's eyes could glaze over on this, but it's just the way that the the sixty-two, eight, ten, it was never intended that all of that would be taxpayer-funded, right? Fourteen, one, one point three or one point four was intended to be ESF-funded. We didn't need the ESF fund, and so we pulled some of that back, but we had already expended it, so we're sort of adding that back. So, you know, as you look over here, you see that hundred and seventy thousand and the hundred and sixty-nine, five, thirty-four. And that's broken down between operating and capital and you see I've I've over expended the capital budget because I'm pushing capital from FY twenty-two, excuse me, capital intended for twenty-three, I'm advancing it to spend in twenty-two. On the next two pages, you'll see there's like, you know, across from these individual line items, there's a number of reasons, I'm sort of giving you a sort of a, here's a crosswalk, here's how you need to look at this. You know, for example, you see a positive variance in teaching, well, that's the ESF role, we didn't spend the ESF, so you have to pull that out. We had better hiring than than budget and we've also had some churn. So every time you have churn, that delays the spending and that creates a positive variance. You know, look at the the transportation here, you got, you know, fuel, higher gas and diesel prices, you know, that's really significant. The custodial supplies, custodial supplies typically on the, in the end of year, that number usually happens like that because custodial supplies and their needs, we can always accelerate those because they need it for summer cleanup and the like. So that's, that's a very typical figure. Energy prices for distribution and we have a high school meter issue. So basically, we haven't paid a gas bill at the high school since January. And probably the last good bill we got was a January bill, but when we got the February bill, it was like a hundred dollars. And, you know, these bills should be twenty or thirty thousand dollars. So we have a big encumbrance in there. I don't know where, you know, where that will go, you know, the encumbrance is sitting in here and it's sitting in here. This is the expenditure, so hopefully, we have enough to cover. Because, you know, we'll, the, we had a decent winter, but it's, that's our best guess at this point. So anyways, you see here the explanations beside this available budget. So the available budget, if it's got the parentheses, it's a negative variance. If it doesn't, it's a positive variance. And what I've done is tried to put, you know, notes that give you an indication of what the ultimate cause of that was. So there's a couple of pages here that, because it's dense, I broke it up between the special ed and the vocational and the regular ed. You know, once again, you see the advancing capital, FY twenty-three capital into FY twenty-two. So so what's going to happen now between now and the end of the year? So right now, keeping by the projection, about a hundred and seventy thousand positive variance. But between now and the end of the year, there's going to be some purchase orders, they'll, they'll close out and some will release unexpended balances, so that will force the the balances up. We have some grants, you know, we'll apply some, some, and I've already accounted for some of these in the forecast, but the offsets be applied to Metco and some smaller grants, so one- but the offsets be applied to Metco and some smaller grants. So once again, that could drive the unexpendable balance up. Revolving accounts, you know, we may, the some of the revolving account offsets, we don't necessarily apply those as we go through the year, so those may be applied. And maybe they won't be applied, depending on where I'm going to bring this balance in at. So so all of these may create additional positive variances. So how do, you know, manage in the year and close? So what I'm, you know, what I'd like is, you know, if the school committee could give approval for me to, you know, give me some flexibility so that, you know, as we go along, that I have the flexibility to transfer some funding into the special ed reserve. And I have the last slide, and I'll show you why I'm thinking of that. And then, you know, some additional flexibility, perhaps to reduce the athletic revolving to reserve for a future athletic facilities project. That could be, hey, we use money now for the turf, for the for the tennis courts. Maybe we'd have some money to apply to the turf, maybe to some other project, you know, the health and wellness, or if, you know, we're going to hear a presentation later. But that could give the by pulling some of that back, if we have available funds, because that one seventy could go to zero as quick as it can go up. It would give the school committee the flexibility to, you know, use some of those funds for some of those other projects. So the last thing I'm going to put in here, so Lisa White, who who has been in in the especially executive assistant now for well over a year, she's just doing a fabulous job in tracking tracking tuitions, really, really fabulous. So back in when we did the original budget, we projected, you know, tuitions. This would be net of offsets and grants of, you know, three point six million dollars. And then, you know, she's been giving me several updated tuition projections for next year throughout the course of this year, and just gave me a more recent one update today. So that new tuition projection is for next year is three million, seven eighty four. So that's next year's budget. So the differential in the budget impact is a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And all of these changes happen post-budget. So that's a situation where that special ed reserve account could actually be used. Now, in addition to the known tuitions, that one fifteen is known tuitions. She has also provided me with a tuition tuition watch list total of other other students that are being watched. And and these are increasing simply because kids have struggled with being out of school and and they have, you know, and they have their other needs. So we have a couple, you know, we have some evaluations going on, which could result in tuitions, and we have others that we're watching that maybe there's no activity now, but we're concerned about them. And that total is like four hundred and sixty seven thousand dollars. Back in February, I think I told everybody that the balance in that special ed reserve is four hundred thousand dollars. In in any event, you know, what I what I would say is, I don't believe that four sixty seven will really develop. I think typically what will happen is, you know, it it might be, it may be a hundred, maybe two hundred, it could be someplace in that vicinity. Or maybe it's nothing. We just never know. However, these are real students, and there's like five or six of them. So something's likely to happen. So that's why I'm suggesting if you give me some flexibility, perhaps to, you know, to transfer up to two hundred thousand into that special ed reserve, that would potentially put the balance at six hundred thousand, but next year, because our budget's tight, right? Our budget, we know we're going to make that whole eight hundred and sixty thousand that we need for those new positions. Because we only get the point six of an increase. We know we'll make that. But that's considering that we're not going to pick up special ed tuitions, that those are going to be coming from the reserve. So I think that, you know, this would be a reasonable time to be a little cautious and allow some money. I would suggest, you know, the leeway of up to two hundred thousand so that I can make such an entry if we do have a positive balance, or in any event, at least a hundred and fifteen, because I know about those. And then you could still have the four hundred thousand dollar reserve. So that's a that's sort of justification for that, for why I'm asking for the flexibility to transfer to the special ed reserve. And then the flexibility reduce athletic revolving. We've often, you know, decreased that amount to the amount that will actually apply to the budget, you know, when we have significant funds left over. And, you know, it's sort of good that we did, because this year we're putting three hundred thousand dollars into the tennis courts. And we know we have some other big athletic expenses coming up, either for the turf or perhaps the health and wellness center. And I think some funding there would be beneficial to those projects as well. Okay, so I'm ready for questions.
Can I start? I go?
Yeah, go ahead, Jen.
So my first question, I have two questions. My first one, John, is when you're talking about the tuition watch and then the special ed reserve, it was my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that the special ed reserve fund would only be used for if students, special ed students were to move into the district. Is that correct?
Those are for tuitions that we didn't know about when we did budgets. When we did, that we did not know about when we did the budget. So, you know, whether they move in or whether they become new because they've developed, it's not, it doesn't have to be move-ins, Jen. That's for, you know, here's your budget, and now here is what we have. All of a sudden, you know, we could have a new person get placed. They could be from the outside, but they could also be in the inside, and they've been on watch.
Okay, I thought I thought the special ed reserve fund was for was for only when people moved into the district. But I will move on to my next question. So I just want to obviously thank you for your update tonight, and, you know, I really appreciate seeing all these capital projects that we're advancing. And I want to thank the facilities department, you know, for early jumping on all of that and having all those quotes ready. And I just, I have one question. I don't know if Gary, maybe Gary or Jamie would be able to answer this. On the list of items you have listed, can you just explain what the expand assessment programs, English as well as math is?
We're going to be adopting the an assessment system for screening and reading and math as well as targeted interventions coming from that system.
And so, Jen, we had some money in there, but the, you know, had not been spent. So, you know, that's that's showing in there. So it's being spent, but we also added D L A to it. So so now we can assess English as well as as math.
That's great. Thank you. That's all I have.
At least that's my perception. That's how I understand it, Jamie.
Yeah, we just said the same thing.
Okay. Hopefully, everybody understands one way or the other.
Tim, I have you next on my screen.
Sure, mine's pretty specific. I was just wondering if Gary and I spoke about a twelve thousand dollar safety saw for the high school wood shop to replace one that's dangerous. I'm wondering if that's reflected in this or if that would come out of the hundred and seventy thousand.
It's reflected in here, Tim. I knew about that. But but the one the one I got was nine thousand. You said there was a twelve thousand?
I I thought it was twelve thousand.
Okay.
It was it was pretty itemized. So, Tim, I, we actually got that request from the high school, and I passed it right along to to John, so he's 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 on it.
Carrie?
Thank you. I just, I wanted to make one point. And, John, could you confirm that the Esser funding, that the the Fed, it's a federal grant that is intended to be spent over several years and not intended to be used in one year?
Well, the intention is to have the district use it the way they need it, Carrie. So, you know, it can be used at the at the at the district's discretion, but they did, in fact, set those parameters where, you know, essa two has to be spent by the end of twenty three, essa three has to be spent by the end of twenty four. But they even just came out with news, I believe, to say essa three can is going to be extended eighteen months. And 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 a lot of that has to do with the, you know, there's been an incredible influx of money into every district in this, you know, into every district in this state. And it's all the federal government money. And, you know, let's think about it. It's 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 not wrong. I mean, perhaps it's been inflationary and whatnot, right? But if if they're giving two trillion dollars out to all communities throughout the country, we should take our portion of that two trillion, and we should spend it to the greatest benefit of the Hingham taxpayer and and save the Hingham taxpayer money when we can. So so that's it. So, yeah, so that's why I say I say roll them, and then, you know, you look for your needs over the next couple of years. And and then then you could use that money for those types of needs as opposed to just making it a regular recurring, you know, budget, which we did thought about last year. But, you know, turned out, you know, it is a sunny day forecast where things, a lot of things are working in in the district's favor money-wise, that you could, in fact, you know, defer those or pull that back and use those at a later date.
Yeah, I guess I would just argue that just the public schools have been underfunded for a long time, and it was more about, you know, meeting students' needs over some time, and you can't do that all in one year. So.
No, and that's true. Yeah. And and with COVID, I mean, we know COVID is not a one-year recovery, right? COVID is a several-year recovery.
Right. So my question is about, the other question is about the special ed reserve fund. Have we ever used it?
We have not used it yet, no.
And what year was it?
Oh, boy, that was, that could have been fourteen or could have been fourteen, could have been thirteen. You know, so over the, you know, we did make a couple of deposits to it over a couple of years.
Right. I mean, your point about we we had such a was a point zero six budget increase for that over the, so we are running very lean next year. So it would make sense, I guess. I just would hope that everyone went through with a fine-tooth comb to make sure that there's nothing else that we, the money should go towards for meeting student needs. Like, I think it's it's great to have that fund for unexpected tuitions. It makes total sense. But I would hate to do that at the expense of anything that we could pay for this year.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've sort of looked at, there's, you know, whenever, whatever ideas that that come, Carrie, I sort of have looked at them and said, well, I don't know that I've said no to anything, you know, if it's if it's useful and if it makes sense. You know, like, you know, for a perfect example would be the E L A, and, you know, that added forty thousand dollars to a budget item. It's like, yeah, we need the assessment, whether, you know, why defer it till next year? Let's do it this year. So, I mean, I think we're looking at all of those. The 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 thought of hiring to do something, that's, you just can't hire the people quickly enough and make any dent in a budget. Or, you know, perhaps even get it scheduled and get the students to participate in in anything extra. You know, we're doing all the right stuff. We have the summer acceleration academy, you know, planned again for the summer. I mean, so we're 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 using all the funding that we have for those purposes. And what you look at is, what have we, what academic stuff have we advanced into this year? Right? I mean, that's about the best you can do. And I think we did, you know, relative to the software for that assessment. You know, if if another educator or Margaret or anybody says, hey, we need this software, you know, we we could certainly do that. You know, we we've got the nursing software. I just saw a P O come across on on that. So we've actually, you know, expanded our capabilities quite a bit. So basically, haven't said no to anything.
Hey, great. I don't, did Gary have something to add to that? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just want to add to that. You know, I I, we have met with the administrators ever since the the last budget presentation to ensure that all the needs that are out there. You know, one of the dilemmas that we have with the last couple of years is, you know, everyone is so focused on running their schools that a lot of the things that they budgeted for and the work that they had planned, everything was, you know, it was a priority-based system, and it was just getting schools to run really kind of created some kind of a hold on in, you know, just requesting these items that they that they really need. So I think John has done a really good job of trying to work with the administrators to make sure that they have what they initially said they needed in the budget, get those items ordered, and try to get our budget as close to zeroed out as we possibly can because of of the need. And there are needs. I mean, there are some principals that want some things that we just can't can't purchase right now. But, you know, we look at equity across all buildings and try to make sure that everyone has what they need, and I think that's a priority. And John, you know, in his office, if I'll, I just, I'm extremely, extremely impressed by the responsiveness to the business office. Anything that that I have put forward, I support or principle putting something forward because of need, because of emergency. It gets done very quickly, and it's it's, there's not a lot of lag time between initial identification and actually get things. So, you know, John is is working diligently, and this this will not close until the end of June. And, you know, John will will watch it until his very last minute that he's on on the job.
Yeah, and even at the end of June, Gary, we won't know, because we get the final payrolls that have to go out. So everything has to, everything has to go through the books and, you know, so it takes several weeks after the after the close. But by giving some flexibility on some items, I can, I I have better inclines just because I've managed the budget. It's like, okay, well, you know, let's do this or, you know, because if we if we cut it close and we go under, we can always like do a journal entry to turn it back. So.
Great. Thank you. That's really helpful.
Matt?
Yeah, maybe just a couple of quick questions and then a comment. So historically, John, I just, I don't have the the context. Like, if we're at one seventy on May fifteenth, like, what does that look like compared to previous? I don't mean every single year, but like, is this higher than normal? I know that, or is this about where we are?
The one seventies, the the one seventies, you know, a good place to be, I think, Matt, right? I mean, you know, when you look at it, there's over ninety nine percent of the budget actually spent, right? So, you know, you you hear one seventy, but you've got to realize that it's like a very small percentage of the budget. You know, like, for example, too, if I were negative right now, I wouldn't be worried about being negative a hundred thousand either, right? So I I don't I don't get worried in this range, but because I I believe that money will, like, when the purchase orders close out, I get, early on, I guess, get really nervous if I was negative at all. And over the years, you get a little less nervous, because what happens is the P O's close out and more money develops. So I'm comfortable in this range, but I do believe I need some flexibility.
But it does, so that makes sense. I mean, it does feel like maybe this is higher, I don't know, higher. I guess where I'm trying to go is, should we be, not we, meaning the administrators and, you know, other people that are smarter than us in terms of where we can spend the money, saying like, look, we're probably going to have a hundred thousand dollars left. We don't know for sure. But based on what you just said, where we are today, and probably what I heard most of the probably goes up a little bit higher. So and then say with, you know, could could come down with, based on the information, we don't know. Like, if we had a hundred thousand dollars to spend, I mean, I I know we kind of just did this, or Ness, I think you were a part of leading a conversation around this. But but maybe we need to go back and say, okay, we're we're at the point now, like, this is, you know, we have a month left. Is there anything else that people can think of? One, and then two, the other thing that's kind of going through my mind is, I'm not saying we're not thinking creatively, but like, in the past, we haven't had to deal with the learning loss that we've had to over the past couple of years. Like, are there are there new things that we should be investing in now? I realize this is probably not possible to get it done in the next forty five days. But I guess I just ask us to think about that. Are there, I don't know, like, educational consultants that we can hire to think about and and pay them ahead of time to think about, how do we put together a plan, more of a plan to get after learning loss? So I don't know if that's, I guess that's kind of more of a comment than a question. And then the final question, I guess, is just on the Esser funds, are we maxed out? Like, could a decision be made to put more into rolling over, or were the the ninety eighty five is the max, like, we can't put anymore? I might be giving the wrong number.
I can I can answer the the S one. The Esser, we we've already spent three ninety, so we don't want to roll that back, because that's been requested by the government, received and spent. So, you know, what what we have remaining is that three eighty five or the three ninety eighty five or something. Oh, excuse me, the nine eighty five. That's what we have remaining. So we.
Yeah, I guess I'm saying, like, do we have the ability to say, well, let's, you know, on June thirtieth, let's make that one, one million eighty five?
There's no money. That's we, the the combination of what we spent plus what we pulled back. There's no money that's we the the combination of what we spent plus what we pulled back is equal to the total number of the grants.
Okay, thank you.
Um, yeah, and John, I have a couple of questions. Um, so I guess for. Context, I think the first year I was on, I think we sent back to the town. It was either sixty seven thousand or eighty thousand. Um, it was in that range. So the hundred and seventy, you say that that's excess at this point. Given what you know, um, because most of it is salaries, can you come up with an estimate of what you think might be remaining at the end of the year? Can we come up with some kind of guesstimate of what that total amount might might look like? Because that might help us for the next school committee meeting to to make any decisions that we need to make.
Well, I I think this is the best I can do, Ness. I'm not, I'm not going to get any better at this until after we close out and we get all the final payrolls in. Because what, you know, we we have payroll going in, right? But not all payroll is encumbered. So we have hourly payrolls and we're doing a projection based on days. And, you know, so and and the the scary part of forecasting too is, you know, aside from being very humble, it's very, very scary. Because what if you missed a payroll? Or what if some encumbrances haven't been released and you're not aware of them? Okay. So, you know, there can certainly be some fluctuations here and there can be surprises. And at the end of the year, we make, you know, what we'll do our regular payrolls and then we have like, you know, um. Teachers and and some employees get paid over twenty six pays on the twenty second pay. They get one, then they get four more, and then some get lump sums. And and, you know, it's presumably all encumbered. Okay, but you you may have had changes during the year and it didn't get correctly reencumbered. So there's a, there's a lot of things that can happen in the accounting world. So what you have to do is you have to get down to the bottom where you're like pretty comfortable that everything is in. And then you get the opportunity to look at it and you get to the opportunity to make some journal entries. So that you, you know, try to correct them the best you can. But the problem is by the time that happens, it's July. Right? So so and you can't have a, you can't wait for a school committee meeting and 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 say, hey, well, I have this because then it's too late.
Yeah. Okay. Um, all right. And so then for context, we had talked about during our finance subcommittees. Meetings. So when we when we talked about that one point seven, we recognized that nine hundred thousand was S R. So we didn't really need to put that in there because you hadn't pulled that down yet. And just thinking about other ideas as you took us through, um, capital was a lot of what you could, you could. Go and purchase now, um, because those are one time cost. Um, so you had mentioned we had. I think it was one point seven that we had asked capital outlay for, and then we got eight hundred and eighty three thousand of that. Um, so there was a remaining amount and you you were trying to close the gap on that. So I just wanted to give some financial information around that um, that piece. Um, so we're closing the gap there. Um, there were a couple of other ideas. I had talked to you and Gary about um, just some of the uh. The feedback that we hear in the community, there is the um. The social, emotional and the mental health crisis that's happening right now and some ideas that we might be able to. To deal with that is to have these executive function classes. And I recognize that that's an issue with scheduling, so that might not be able to happen during the school day. But we might be able to um, hire some consultants or teachers to provide classes um, after school or before school. Um, so I think Gary was going to look into maybe putting out a survey and and get some ideas around that. Uh, so that might be something else that we could do to try to address, address the um, the mental health crisis. But Dr. Adams, she did, she did join us for one of our subcommittee meetings and she had recognized that um. COVID is, we've got these issues that are going to be continuing for the years to come. So she had recognized the S R funds of the two hundred thousand for next year and the seven hundred thousand for the year after that she. Um, she thought that those would be good to hang on to just to deal with anything that comes up so that she can address the issues and have. Has the uh, resources to deal with that. Um, so I guess. We've got our next, we, no, we've got a school committee meeting set up for June ninth. Um, perhaps we could set up a finance subcommittee meeting. For sometime next week to come up with any other ideas and then. Come to the June ninth meeting with uh, a possibility to um, to vote on how to use the excess funds if we end up using them. I know you had mentioned special ed being one of them. Um, given that's been in existence since uh, twenty fourteen, I think is when we first had it. Um, we've never used it and and granted, you're using some of it now. Um, but that was set up to be for unanticipated. Special ed reserve, uh, special ed tuition that come come down the pike. And so my last question, I guess, is is did, how how did we not know about this last uh, special ed if it wasn't somebody that moved into the district?
You have new, you have new students um, getting evaluated every day. You know, and special ed is very fluid, very, very fluid.
Okay.
So.
So have we just, sorry, I love.
Yeah.
I just a fob of that. So, because I, that's what's going through my head too. So it seems like every, it it would be shocking to me that any year pre. You know, when we make our original fiscal year forecast for the following year that it would be right. I, right, I mean, you just, you sort of said that and especially with special ed. So have we not had to access those funds in the past? Like, why, I guess, it, why have we never had to use it before? It might be a good thing. I just don't really, it seems like that that could happen any year. Um, we've just.
Right, right, but all the years, Ben, so we we've had, you know, better budgets. We've had budgets that could perhaps absorb, you know, a hundred thousand dollars or so. You know, when you, if you're, if you're getting, you know, a three and a half, four percent increase, but when you get a point six increase, you're tight next year. Right? I mean, we we we've taken a different tact on budgeted, so, you know, trying to sharpen the pencil, trying to make these numbers as low as we possibly could. We initially presented a one point four three, it got reduced to a point six. Okay, and we're still saying we're doing everything we said we were going to do. So we're making up that one point three. You know, so so it's just sort of like, you know, how do you want to hedge your bets? You can hedge it with S R. You don't have to do it. Hedge it with S R, I mean, or hedge it with grants. You can, you can, you can do it anyway. I mean, if somebody has an idea of, uh, you know, I think one that makes um, that. Educational sense for how you want to like spend a hundred, two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars. And that it can be triggered or begun in the month of Ju- Ju- June, then, you know, uh, I'm all ears. But but it has to be done by June thirtieth. It has to be in progress by that date.
Right, okay. All right, I'm going to, um, I see um, an attendee who's got a question, Dave Anderson.
All right, there we go. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, thanks.
Hi, John. Hey, John, first and foremost, thank you for everything. And if I don't get a chance to ask you another question in the rest of. My or your career, then uh, it's been a pleasure working with you and I'm eternally grateful for all of your hard work. I I seriously, seriously am. Um, quick question and forgive me if maybe I missed it. Because I I haven't probably been to every meeting you've had since town meeting, but last I recalled, there was. About three hundred and sixty thousand dollars of savings in the in the twenty three budget. Through retirements and some of the other savings, which is great. And it now sounds like you guys think you're going to be able to fund all of the eight fifty. Which is also great. And I'm just wondering if you could help me. Bridge that extra five hundred thousand between the three sixty and the eight fifty that's going to uh, fill out the twenty three ads.
Yeah, well, we've had a couple more retirements since the last time. I mean, this isn't really a budget update for twenty three, David, but. We have had a couple of additional um, a a couple of additional retirements. And we've had, um, you know, we, I sort of a little restructure in in an organization. So, you know, I'm just adding up all the pieces. So I'm probably instead of eight fifty, I think I'm, I had. I I probably up somewhere around like five eighty now. Um, I'd have to look at my sheet to see exactly where I am, but. So I'm not prepared. I I didn't prepare a F Y twenty three budget update. I prepared a budget update for F Y twenty two. So and I and I think that, you know, by the time we look at the hiring and the additional resignations that will occur. Um, I think that, you know, we're we're going to make that money. Um, and if we don't, we'll just throw in um, some extra revolving funds. So we're going to make the money. You know, we're close.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, um, so. I will propose that we put on the next agenda to um, to be able to vote on how do we, how we address the fiscal twenty two. Was uh, remaining funds if we have them. Right. All right, so next item on the agenda is six point two. To review school committee policies, A dash, A through L to ensure that policies incorporate gender inclusivity. It's a second. Uh, Jen, did you want to take us through this?
Can I pull it up?
Do you have access? Yeah.
Yeah.
Great.
In my Zoom. Okay, um. So. Yes, so we, there's, I sort of quickly mentioned that there were minimal changes due to the policy subcommittees um, work the prior year. Um, and there were just a few changes that are included in the document during your packet. Um, and I want to reiterate that these changes are. In an effort to ensure that our policies are, um, use language that is gender inclusivity. Um, so if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. On the changes there, there should have been links to each individual policy for you to look at the full policy if you have questions. So, so any questions?
Anyone have any questions or comments? Tim?
Uh, I don't have any questions. I mean, it seems pretty self explanatory, just the gender changes to the gender neutral language. Uh, this is sort of going back to Barbie Lynch's point earlier of what's the process of getting the policy updates into. Um, online as we're making more policy changes. Uh, Heather Cashman or?
Oh, I can, I can answer that. So, um, I think it's the, it's the title on the on the website. Um, that whole policy was revised on May tenth, but if you go into the policies, take for example, um. Like the mask policy was on there, um, and then it was removed. Um, and we use, we use the M A S C website, it's linked to them. So if we have any changes. We email them and then they update the link. Um, there is section D is currently going to be added in there because that was just approved about a month ago. Um, and then whatever comes over, comes out of tonight and the next. Um, few meetings, I will then send a request over to M A S E to update. The main server of the policies. Maybe Carrie can um, give some more information on that.
Yeah, is that okay, Ness?
Yeah, Carrie, yeah.
Yeah, no, just the the policies have been updated as we've updated them as a committee. I think it's just the link on the website. It says policy manual as of May tenth, but they're they're pretty much up to date as we've gone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Um, somebody want to make a motion to approve?
I think Barbie's raised her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, Barbie Lynch.
Hi, uh, I'm on my phone now, so can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, um, Barbie Lynch through Westmoreland Road. Um, is there a way to request a physical printed copy of the policies? Just so I can get a better understanding of um, our policies as we go through them?
Carrie, Jen, do you happen to know?
Um, Carrie?
Um, yes, M A S E sent us a PDF file, so you can submit a records request. Um, it's a public record, so we should be able to provide that for you.
Do you know who I would request that to?
The superintendent is the records officer for the district. It's on the website.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? Somebody want to make?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve policies A through L, which ensure the policies incorporate gender inclusivity.
Okay, roll call vote. Ally?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Okay, that is approved. Um, item six point three to review proposed changes to the school committee policy K B E, which relates to P T O booster relations. It's a second read. I'm actually going to ask that we table this. Um, we had an update from the wellness subcommittee. Uh, at the last meeting and some of the recommendations coming out of that has not been reflected in here. So I'm going to ask that the policy subcommittee take that back up. Okay, so new business, um, seven point one to hear a Hingham sports partnership proposal regarding a wellness center at Hingham High School. And I believe we have two community members here who are going to speak to that, Kevin Quilty and Ray Estes. Maybe if you raise your hand, Sherry might be able to see you. Okay.
Sorry, can you hear me, Ness?
Yeah, I can hear you. Thanks, Kevin. I think Ray is joining us too. Yep.
All right, um. So my name's Kevin Quilty, four ninety six Main Street. I'm talking today on behalf of the Hingham Sports Partnership. I believe also on our call, um, our number of other H S P members, Deb McCarthy, our president. Ray Estes and Ted Healy, the vice presidents. And Dan Rakouskas, Zach Sergeant, Kelly Monroe, who have all worked on this project. I thought I'd take a quick, quick minute to recap how we got here for those new members and anyone else who's just kind of tuning in. This should only take a second, so bear with me as I read this to you guys. Um, believe it or not, this idea all started with me a couple of years ago. I have a nephew at the high school who was autistic. I remember his first year at the high school, his mom said to me, I can't believe they don't have a gym like they do at the middle school. It was a real help for many of the students. Uh, soon after I suggested she send him to the gym where my kids were currently going. She kind of looked at me like I had three heads and said, your kids play sports and are trying to play in college. That's not really his thing. At that point, I had to share with her how these facilities in my mind can be so much more than a bench press machine. I brought my nephew up to Boxer Gen and introduced him to a few people who worked there. He soon started to go and oftentimes I will pick him up. One day after he had been going for a few weeks, I went in to give him a ride home and watched him walk across the gym to leave. Two high school boys called him by name and gave him a high five as as he left. This wasn't normal in the past for such a shy kid. For this boy and his uncle, myself. That acceptance was better than any bench press. That was two years ago, and this is where the idea really came from. These facilities, in my opinion, have such a much bigger impact than just athletes working out. Hingham High needs a facility on campus that is as friendly for freshman, boys and girls, unified teams. Athletics and everyone in between. Currently, I don't believe they have that facility. Last June. Last June, I shared some of this with our group at Hingham Sports Partnership. And combined, we started to explore this idea. We first came before the school committee in October. We requested your permission to explore the ability to convert an old snack bar into a fitness room for the Hingham High School. The committee voted to allow this and we went to work. Over the last eight months, we've met and spoke to many people, including Principal Swanson, the superintendent a couple of times. Uh, a member of the planning board, the building inspector, had coffee with one of the selectmen. We worked with an architect as well as a team of engineers that visited the site and issued drawings and a report. The school facilities manager also met us at the site. We've also met with local town individuals who were very involved ten years ago, I believe. With the field project to gain some perspective on any hurdles we might come across in taking on such a project. Once we pulled all the information, we needed to bring it to the sports partnership board. To first see if this was something that fell in line with our organization's mission and also if everyone was on board with such a large project. Like with everyone we had talked with, it was unanimously seen as a great project that is much needed. At this point, we recently reported back to the health and wellness subcommittee of the school committee as well as capital and facilities subcommittee. We reported that based on all the info we gathered, we feel like we can raise the money to fund this project. So today, we're now here asking for your permission to move forward with what we're calling the doc. With a little help from Google, we determined that the doc is where Harbor Women as well as Harbor Men gather to both socialize as well as work. So we've provided, I believe, your committee with the information that we've, we've come up with and really now are just coming back to you saying, those are the numbers that we've come up with and we feel that we as an organization can do this and are looking forward to A, answering any questions you have or seeing how the committee feels about us moving forward.
Thank you so much, Kevin. Thanks for sharing that story too. So for my committee members, you have two documents in your packet. Does anybody have any questions? Ally? Oh, I think you might be on mute. I'll go to Jen and then we'll come back to you. Okay, Jen?
Okay. I just had, just a quick comment just to Kevin and Ray. I, because we've heard, we've heard from the two of you through the policy subcommittee meetings about this project and I just, I really appreciate you being here tonight to give us this information. It's, it's really nice to see the sketches, the, the building pictures and it's really, just wanted to thank you. I think I've asked you plenty of questions on the subcommittee meeting, so I won't continue with that, but I just wanted to thank you.
Okay, Ally? Okay. Nope. Any other questions? Maybe we can come back to Ally. Matt?
Yeah, I mean, this seems great. I get, maybe this is more to people that have been on the committee. I mean, is there, what's like the, what's the reason not to do this from a school committee? I don't even know if I can ask that question, but this seems to be a great idea. It seems this is going to be funded. So tell me if I can ask that question. Sorry, still learning. But i- is there any con as we think about this?
I think, John, you might be able to help characterize any cons. Like, you, you've gone through the process before, so what are we expecting to happen here?
I will tell you, Matt, if I can say one thing and answer from my perspective, the, one of the reasons I listed off all the people we talked to is we tried to go find the cons. And before, prior to coming to you guys and learning the cons, we tried to go undig them. And I think it's a sign of a good project when we can't find them. And actually, honesty, the feedback we got from a few people was you have to raise the money. So that's the hard part.
That makes sense.
And that's the part that we've kind of had to come to grips with, with our, with our group, but, but I'd be curious if John has any as well.
Yeah, no, I, I don't really see any cons. I mean, the, the only con that would be there is, you know, it's, it's used for storage now, but for the sake of getting a health and wellness center at that high school, we can figure out what to do with storage. I mean, you know, and, and I think, you know, from my view, we, we were, we had been talking about a health and wellness center many years ago. And, you know, that high school is, is a pretty good building. You know, but, but the healthcare, the health and wellness facilities there are horrible. And, you know, I fear myself, like, you know, if we don't upgrade those within the next few years, people are going to be screaming for a brand new high school just because you don't have a, you know, a 21st century health and wellness center that, or something that looks good. So, I mean, I think that it's, I, I think it's a great project. I can't see any con in it whatsoever, aside from that storage.
Ally, do we want to try to go back to you? Is it working?
Is that working now?
It is.
Nice.
Sorry, technical difficulties. Ray and Kevin, first, I just wanted to say thank you for all the work on this. And I was wondering if you could share a little bit for the people listening. I know from firsthand experience with the students, what the health and wellness center is currently like, but maybe you can describe a little bit, the space they're currently using, just to give it a little more color.
Yeah, I went, Ally, to, because I have two children, I should say, that have graduated from Hingham High School and have gone through it, and I had never seen the, the current weight room. And so I asked when we started this if I could go see it, and I did. And I have to admit, I was expecting worse, but it had been cleaned up in the last, I want to say five, four or five years, there was some money donated to get some new equipment in there. But what I'll tell you is there's not one window in the, in it at all. And there's pipes going all across the top, which isn't as bad as, as it probably sounds as pipes going back. It, it kind of reminded me of, you know, my unfinished basement growing up. And, and the equipment in there is, is fairly new, but I just don't find, and I did ask a number of coaches to, girls, coaches of girls' teams, and they seemed unanimously to say, none of the girls went in this room. And, and I don't think it's anything anyone's doing, it's just not, you know, as you guys could see in our projections, what we're trying to do is get more windows and more light into a building and really make it a little more friendly, if you will. And that's what I've, I've always said, we're not really trying to make, I'll throw the football team under the bus, we're not trying to make the football team weight room here. We're trying to make a fitness center that everyone in the school can feel comfortable using and, and feel good. So, so I, from a size perspective, I, I actually have pictures and a video of it, but I, I, I wouldn't know how to really guess. It's, it's, it's the room, I couldn't tell you the size exactly, but not big enough is what I would say.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And that's my understanding as well, that it's hard for all the teams and they alternate times to use it and just the setup isn't comfortable for everyone.
And I will say, in, in all honesty, this building that we're hoping to try to transform probably isn't, if you were building a high school from brand new, you'd probably build one bigger as well, but, but we're not. And, and quite frankly, I just listened to the budget presentation and I follow it along and I'm not sure, you know, anything else has come along anytime soon. And, and what we learned is the longer we put off doing these things, they don't seem to get cheaper. So I think it would be a nice stopgap between now and X number of years from now. And I, and I truly believe, I, I've, I've watched, I've paid attention, I, I look at other schools and especially coming off the last couple of years you've had and hearing you guys talk about social, emotional, I just, I, I really see these types of places, if, if managed correctly, just being transformative for all different kinds of kids and all different reasons.
Thank you.
Ness, if, if I could just chime in for a second? And so I, I just wanted to recognize Kevin and he and Dan Rakouskas initially kind of ran with this idea from the outset and then brought others of us on the board in to talk about it. You know, I've had some involvement with projects. You know, Deb McCarthy was, was immediately excited about it and we've been spending a lot of time talking about it. We have a small group within the board working on it. But I, I want to thank Kevin publicly and Dan as well for, for their efforts over the last year, kind of pulling this together and spearheading it and, and the passion that I think is behind it. And it's, it's really a great, a great thing if we can, if we can pull it off. Just for, real quickly, for the new members, you, you may have heard John mention a health and wellness center, right? So a number of years ago, when I was on the school committee, a number of us tried to do something where we were going to bump out from where the existing locker rooms are next to the high school because the health curriculum had changed and we needed to add a health teacher. And we only had the one health classroom. And if you've been in that health classroom, it's very low ceilings, pipes, smells from the showers, not, not, it's a meeting room for teams, not a great room and certainly very small, needed some more space. And in addition to that, this was before the new equipment in the weight room had been purchased and had been cleaned up a little bit. So that weight room was in really, really sad shape. And at the time, I think two years in a row, when we used to have our tours of the schools to go over capital needs and point out to members of the select board and advisory, you know, potential projects, we spent two Thanksgiving times going by and looking at that facility because that was something we really wanted to, to improve. And we had a local architect draw up some plans for what would be a bump out that would include a health classroom and a fitness center above. And, you know, we started down the, the path and we were gonna try to get a warrant article together and we ended up withdrawing it, I think, at the time, back in 2015, 2016, because it wasn't the right time, it was going to be too expensive and it just wasn't, wasn't the right time. And when Kevin came up with this idea, that kind of, kind of tracks the same thinking, but in a different way and uses an existing facility and, and, you know, the idea to do it with, with private money, you know, is, is really an exciting endeavor. HSP has shown a track record of being able to raise money like this and to be able to help coordinate fundraising activities of this size. So we feel confident and our board is all in on this, on this project. And this is going to be our major fundraising effort over the next year or two.
Great, thanks. Carrie?
Yeah, I'll just be brief. I just wanted to kind of echo what Ray just said and thank Kevin and everyone on HSP for, you've done a tremendous amount of work already and there's some more ahead with the fundraising. And just, I think you're very supportive of this project and the fact that, you know, our, some of our athletes are working out in private gyms, it kind of takes away from the community that could kind of be enhanced and built more at the high school. I think it's, it would be a great thing to get all of our teams kind of in this one central space where they feel good about working out. And, and then all, all students, you mentioned the unified teams, those are new and they've been a great addition to the, the high school culture and, and for the kids involved. And so I just, yeah, I'm supportive of this and thank you so much for your work.
Yeah, I echo what Carrie just said. Thank you to HSP for taking this on. I think it would be great. I think it extends the life of the high school and it, it adds on, you know, coming from the middle school, we've got the state of the art facilities there and then the kids go on to the high school. It's, you know, less to be desired there. So I appreciate you taking this on. So I think at this point, there's nothing to vote on, but wanted to gain consensus from the committee members as to whether you guys are okay with, with HSP moving forward because I know that they want to make an announcement and, okay, so it sounds like everybody is, everybody's on board. So thank you, Kevin, Ray, Dan, Deb. I appreciate all of you coming in and speaking with us tonight.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright. So the next item on the agenda, actually Michelle had taken us through 7.2 and 7.3. Those were the subcommittee assignments and liaison assignments. So she talked through the process of that. So that will move us to 7.4, which is to discuss proposed changes to school, school committee policy IKFB diplomas, which is a first read. And I will kick it over to Jen.
Yeah, just pulling up. Yeah? Alright, so the subcommittee discussed getting more clarity around participating in the district's commencement ceremony. We met twice, we met once in April and in May, discussed this policy. And both of our conversations and collaborations are with Dr. Mestes. Thank you, Dr. Mestes, for your guidance and knowledge around this policy. You, you can see right here that the first paragraph, black, is the current policy and then we added in the red line part of the policy. And I don't know if anyone had any questions or, Ness, if you want to go. If you have any questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Comments? Tim?
I'm wondering, I'm, my understanding was that school suspensions are over, are on a day when school is meeting. I'm wondering how a student can be suspended on a Saturday. I know some, in severe cases, suspensions are carried over from like the end of one school year to the beginning of next, but I was wondering how someone can be suspended on a Saturday.
Carrie, do you have an answer for that?
There's a Saturday's suspension, so in a sense, instead of missing school, a kid would come back and serve that suspension on a Saturday.
But I, I, actually, now that Tim just brings us to, as I am hearing Tim saying this, they wouldn't be, nobody would be in a, nobody would be suspended at that time so you could probably.
You could.
If they're graduating, would somebody be, because they would have already been.
Yeah.
Completed school.
If that's, if that's for graduation purposes, absolutely. They, they, they should have met all their graduation requirements to even be considered.
Correct. Okay. And this is also just a first read, so we can ask any other questions. We can, if people have time to look at it and then, any more questions? Second.
So as, as Jen said, this is a first read. You typically, we had two reads. We'll, we'll look at it at the next meeting and vote it in that day.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
When it says fails to meet all graduation requirements, and it's pretty simple with all the credit requirements, usually a kid who meets all of Hingham's graduation requirements but isn't able to pass the MCAS would get a certificate of completion. I'm wondering if this applies to receiving a certificate of completion if they didn't complete it.
I believe it's certificate of, they would get the certificate of attainment. Sorry, I think I didn't, I didn't hear the last part too.
Perfect. Sorry.
Carrie, did you have something where you wanted to just clarify that?
I was just clarifying that. I somehow didn't notice.
No, Jen answered for me.
Okay, great. Okay, so we will, this is the first read. So we'll move on to the next agenda item, which I believe is also Jen. 7.5 to discuss proposed changes to school committee policy JICFB bullying prevention. And this is a first read as well.
Get all set up here. So. Yeah? Okay. So the subcommittee, we met a couple of times to review the bullying prevention policy as it's such an important topic. And we wanted to look at the definitions of bullying and cyberbullying and cite the sources of those definitions. There were, there was not a lot that needed, that we wanted to suggest to be changed, however we felt it was important to review the policy. And so we just, we define, we're just citing bullying here as defined by master law as well as cyberbullying defined as master law. I'm not going to read the policy word for word, but I just feel it's important to go over it and see if the committee has any questions. It's worth mentioning that the school committee, at the very top part, you know, it's, the school committee is committed to providing a safe and positive and productive environment. No student shall be subject to harassment, intimidation, bullying, or cyberbullying. And as I said earlier, we have the definitions of cyberbullying, bullying here. And the next thing is we, here we have more language on where bullying is prohibited. And this is more statutory language that we need to follow. We mouse general law. Bullying is prohibited on school grounds, on property immediately adjacent to school grounds. The subcommittee, we did discuss locations, like if a student was bullied after, after they got off the bus, walking home, if they didn't take the bus, if they did walk home. And then these areas, it was just a conversation. And these areas would be covered, if you look here in the language, it says prohibited at a location, create, prohibited at a location. That is not school related. If it create, and then down below it says, if you create, if it creates a hostile environment at school for the target. If it create, and then the demo that says if you create, if it creates a hostile environment at school for the target. And I did, I did have one thought that maybe we might want to add in the definition of hostile environment, but we can discuss that as a committee later on, after I'm done or the next, that's the next read. Okay, so, and then we also added in this red line item as required by master law, section 71B, section three. Whenever the evaluation of an individual education program team indicates that the child has a disability that affects social skills development or that the child is vulnerable to bullying, harassment or teasing because of the child's disability, the individual education program shall address the skills and proficiencies needed to avoid or respond bullying, harassment or teasing. In that's why I was going through this again. I was thinking if this specific paragraph might be something you want to put down under publication and notice, but again, we can go through that. Suzanne, did you have something you wanted to?
Yeah. Thanks, thanks, Jen.
I just wanted to.
Sorry?
I just, I called on you because I know we had discussed, discussed it earlier in the, the policy meeting that you came to.
Yeah, you know, it just occurred to me that we don't only address the skills and proficiencies of students who are at risk of being bullied. We also do that for students with disabilities who are at risk of, of doing the bullying. So we address it from both sides. I just thought that that was important to reflect that.
Then the next.
And also interesting to note, just for parents, special ed kids, this language is also in the IEP's of. Sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay. Carrie?
Yeah, just, we, I just wanted to kind of repeat some of the conversation we had in the subcommittee. And one of the reasons we're thinking about doing this and Suzanne's point's really well taken that it's, it's not just about the child who is being bullied or at risk of being bullied, but also anyone who may not, is we, we're hoping that it would, if, if either the aggressor or the, the child who's vulnerable is we're hoping it would trigger a team meeting or some sort of discussion among the IEP team for, because, you know, schools are at heart educational. And so we want to make sure that A, the kids have the supports they need, but also it could be a teachable moment as well and not just, not just punitive. So what we're trying to do is signal to the team chairs or the building leaders that if, if the child, if there's a child of a disability involved in a bullying incident on any, in any way, that the teams would consider meeting to discuss and make sure the child's supported and has their educational needs and safety needs met in the building.
So the next section we have here is the function of the bullying intervention. And what the function of that plan plays out, that is describing this paragraph. And we just added in red line with the Hingham Public Schools, just to make it a little bit more clear. And then we also wanted to add in the line, the, the ending part of the line that, that the bullying prevention plan and intervention plan is to be posted on the district website, which it is currently, but we just wanted to have that in there because we thought that was something that was really important. And this type of, the bullying prevention, that's also a document, it's required by master law and the district leadership is responsible for the creation of that document as well as the implementation of that document. And like I said earlier, it's to be posted on the website and shall be reviewed and updated at least by annually. And then this plan would be where you would see on that plan that's on the website, that would be where you would see more details about procedures for bullying reflective of this policy. And then around master law. The next sections are reporting, investigation procedures. And this, these sections are taken from the model policy provided by MASC. Again, we had, we also added in, and this section of an anonymous, anonymous reporting form shall be posted on the district website. And then some, just some, under the investigation procedures, just some key points are around safety and confidentiality, you know, the safety of the target. And then the importance of confidentiality, including those who report. And that the confidentiality shall be maintained to the extent consistent with the district's obligation and law. And then lastly, we have the sections on retaliation, training, and then rules around publication of the bullying prevention plan. And does it, okay, if I, it's.
Absolutely.
Tim?
I, I was just going to say viable might be another word we wanted to find. Because I know with a lot of at-risk populations, they report. They report that their reports on being bullied are not taken seriously. So I'm wondering if we can tweak that.
Sorry, I missed the end of, I didn't get the end of your.
Under investigation procedures, it said the principal or designated upon receipt of a viable report. I'm wondering if there is a criteria for what makes a report viable. So it's not just discretion about whether to go forward or not.
Yeah. Good point.
I, I mean, I can jump in there, Jen. We've had, Tim, we've had complaints of kids who didn't exist. So when we checked the rosters, there's no such name, nor, no, I'm not.
Clearly not viable.
Correctly, correct. So I'm not suggesting that there is criteria that they use to, to not investigate something. I think the viability relative to, you know, a baseline of enrollment, for example, or a student that exists. We thought maybe it was a private school student. So under the regulations, we have to notify the private school. Long story short, no such person existed and it was a goof. So we can get reports on the anonymous complaint link that or may involve students whose, for example, weren't in school that day. So it could, it could be an error with the date or it could be, so there are some pieces where without some kind of a qualifier, anything that comes in would be investigated necessarily. Now the investigation could be, no such thing exists, right? So, but that, just to give clarity, it's not that the principals use or have some kind of a criteria that makes something viable. It's things baseline like enrolled.
Sorry, Tim, I don't think we heard what you just said. I'm going to unmute.
I just think Jamie.
Okay. And then I also thought it would be, I said, I think I said earlier to define the the I have the definition here of what, what it means to create a hostile environment. It is included on the bullying prevention plan provided by the district on the website. And it's also a definition provided, you know, through the statute. Any other questions?
I, I guess one question. The IEP, when you, when you put specifically in the IEP, do we also, should we also consider kids who are on 504s?
The IEP is addressing it, Ness, to provide students who have a skill-based deficit in an area that would either cause them to be vulnerable to bullying because of self-advocacy, things such as that. The same for students who engage in the bullying action. There, if there's a skill deficit in something like social pragmatics, that would be a service that is delivered to that student because of their disability. The 504 doesn't offer specially designed instruction. It offers accommodations. So the accommodations in the 504 could certainly reflect any sort of social need, but it wouldn't be a direct service like it would be in an IEP.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions? No, okay. All right, so again, this is just a first read. We'll put it on a future agenda so that we can vote on it. So thank you, Jen. Okay, so a couple more things. 7.6 and 7.7, to receive a homeschool application for a student in grade seven through the end of the 2021, 2022 school year. And then 7.7 is to receive a homeschool application for a student in grade six through the end of the 2021, 2022 school year and to act as appropriate for both of those. So Gary, did you want to take us through that?
Yes, we have two applications that have been received. A sixth grade and a seventh grade student that have been reviewed by my office and they meet approval set forth by the policy of this committee and I recommend approval.
Anybody have any questions?
I just have a general question, not about any of these specific applications. But when somebody is approved for being homeschooled this late in the school year, is it assumed that that carries over to next year? Is that only for this year and they'd have to reapply for next year?
Yeah, that's a great question, Tim. These homeschool applications are only for the school year. So these are unique situations. They, they are leaving the country and returning, but they're, they're unique.
Anyone else have any questions? Okay, CNN, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, to approve the homeschool application for a student in grade seven through the end of the 21, 21, 2022 school year.
Is a second? Ally, okay, thank you. Okay, roll call vote, Ally.
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Jen? Carrie?
Hi.
And I'm an I as well. Somebody want to make a motion for 7.7?
I'll make a motion to receive the homeschool application for the student in grade six through the end of 2021, 2022 school year and as recommended by the superintendent.
There a second? Thanks, Tim. Okay, roll call vote, Matt?
Hi.
Ally?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Okay, so those are approved. So eight on the agenda is subcommittee and project reports. Typically, Ally and Matt, you would be assigned something, so we would call on you first to provide an update. So I will skip ahead to Tim.
It's sounded kind of strange to have a subcommittee meeting in between the old committee and the new committee, but because we had to reschedule a special ed subcommittee from earlier this month, we're having our last subcommittee meeting of the last school committee on Thursday at 4:30 in the school department conference room. And that'll be an in-person meeting.
Great, thanks. Jen?
I, I just have to report that in my, something was earlier, the, the policy subcommittee, we had our last meeting of the year term was on May 11th.
And Carrie?
So I attended the middle school council meeting today. Liza's the liaison, but she's not here anymore and they, they requested somebody go. And we, it was a good meeting. We discussed the school improvement plan. They're working on that. And they did talk about one of the goals is going to be to update the handbook, including the dress code. So that, that'll be a project for, for that. And then the other thing we talked about is the DC trip. There have been a lot of, and we, we've probably all heard some stuff about that, too. There's some questions about pre-travel testing and some logistics around that. So the organizer and Mr. Reardon had been in touch with Glenn Grand Classroom and they have a communication that'll be ready to go to families in advance of the trip. So they'll get those questions answered.
Great, thanks. And then for me, there's some warrants in your packet. Matt and Ally, for your reference, typically the, either the chair or the chair of the finance subcommittee signs the warrants so that approves payment for any expenses that the school incurs. So you'll see a copy of my notes from that in your, in your packet. Okay, so item nine, other items as may not reasonably be known within 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Does anybody have anything? All right, so, oh, Tim?
I just want to point, say that a lot of people were there on Sunday. The Hingham Unity Council had a really nice event of over at the conservatory, people discussing just what it means to live in Hingham and what our vision for Hingham in the future is. That was a really valuable application to have. So I just wanted to acknowledge the Hingham Unity Council for putting that together.
Yeah, thanks for mentioning that. And actually, Dr. Margaret Adams joined us as well. So it was nice to see her there on a sunny, hot Sunday afternoon. So appreciate that. All right, so item 10, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I guess we're staying.
Is there a second? Okay, roll call vote, Ally?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Tim?
Hi.
Jen?
Hi.
Carrie?
Hi.
I'm an I as well. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for sticking with us and we'll see you soon. Bye.
Yes, good night.
Night.
Bye.